This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it is 3 o'clock, so I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you'll call the roll, Mr. Shoemaker, please.
Sure. Mrs. Flaherty.
Here.
Hearing person, Mr. Guy.
Present.
Present remotely, Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Present remotely, Ms. Feinberg.
Here.
Remotely, Mr. Tinkell.
Here.
In person.
Hi, Mr. Guy, and hi, Mr. Banks.
And let's start the meeting with the Pledge of the Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
And do we have... Oh, wait, that's regular meeting. I will turn the meeting over to you, Mr. Shoemaker, since we're starting with the workshop.
And we had, we just had some topics today we wanted to open up for general discussion, and it's kind of a precursor of things to come, and that's basically Emergency Access Road that's been under discussion coming from Gateway Boulevard into Prado and Pelican Preserve, looking at issues related to potential stormwater conveyance under I-75, and Kenny wanted to talk about some irrigation initiatives. And we, I'll just give a brief summary, but the access road from Pelican, the one issue that...
Chris, I'm sorry to stop you, but the first thing I have on the agenda is the assessment methodology and the utility rates?
Yes, we don't have any information on that.
Yeah, and that has to be a typo, because the only thing I had on the utility rates is we were going to talk about return on investment fee, but I think that was just a hangover from the last board workshop. As you see, because the workshop only has the three items that I have listed there.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that since it was on the agenda. Okay.
And we had some presentations, and the folks from Pelican and Mr. Rogner, and the board basically moved, approved the letter of intent to moving forward with the effort without many commitments. Steve Damsick, the attorney for Pelican Preserve, has been and is working with the city of Fort Myers to get a red clarification on the location of the access road and all the requirements to close that road have really already been met to take that out of the whole discussion. And Monarch indicated as long as Mr. ... writing from the city that they don't have any issues as long as it doesn't prevent them from closing out their development schedule and forward. So, so far, we don't have any issues with that, and basically what we'll be looking at now is the conveyance of the fee simple title, which Mr. Tinkell was talking to Tony about that, not only the main Florida power piece and plans that we've been working on the past, so we're also adding that triangular parcel in the access road to that conveyance. And again, we've got indications from Monarch that they don't have any issues with that conveyance and adding it to it. And where we'll start looking at, we do have some preliminary indications on paving the road. The paving part isn't too difficult, it's really the drainage coming off the road where it's going to go. That's what's going to be problematic and considerable cost and engineering fees to the project versus just going out there and paving that road, putting a few gates up.
Some questions. Who's going to be paying for all this? I'm assuming Pelican Preserve should be paying for well and for its maintenance because it is for their community and it isn't for Gateway itself?
Well, that's up for discussion, and we'll get the price tag for it, and of course, Pelican's access to cooperate with them, and also mention that the utility department does have some major lines, and that isn't existing utilities, and so could benefit utility access.
Yeah, but it's for benefit for Pelican, not really for Gateway.
Don't want to argue that. It has benefits to Gateway, but it's our utility side, the enterprise side, because we have to maintain those utilities, and it's 20, 25 minutes going the other way to get around, and if we have an emergency, that, a lot of bad things can happen, and that's another issue. The drainage has got me questioning, right now, when I went out there and looked at it, there does not appear to be, nor has there ever appeared to be, that any of that water comes our way to Gateway Boulevard. It looks like it's setting in its own little trough and possibly going north, goes through the... That's what I would say. So, it sounds like to me is a couple of well-placed inlets under the road to get the water from the south side to the north side would be that. Relative to the maintenance of that parcel of land, right now, it just looks like crap. You come in out of Stony Brook and come up to Gateway Boulevard, and you see that somebody's going out there and has a half-assed job of removing, what do you call it, Brazilian peppers, and half of them are still there, but that, that'd be a good thing for us to get that, and that's up to Gateway, look a little bit better.
That's not the problem.
Drainage is the only issue, yeah.
I just think Pelican should be paying for it.
Well, that will be an issue that we'll add to the list to address. We'll... professions with the Fire and Emergency Medical Services, because we mentioned getting an ambulance or calling the ambulance, it would be an issue. Another issue with the turning radius, so we'll have discussions on their requirements for paving and the type of surface that they... And the connectivity for assessments is an issue we'll discuss further, too. Right now, if it's just an emergency room, it's that connectivity or not makes to be seen.
Is there a berm on that cradle side that keeps elevation so that the water stays, the water doesn't go under the...
You've got to go up to get into the...
That's...
And the water slips across the road.
So, the nine acres that constitutes that triangle, basically, is essentially the nine acres that's going to produce any water?
And it's very sandy soil and drains well there. Are there any other questions from the board members concerning the Emergency Access Road or future discussions? Right now, we're just doing a lot of research, pulling the facts together, laying out a position paper.
Yeah, I think we got to get an answer back from Steve, that the city agrees that the access road that was in question on permit has been, or the DRI has been resolved a long time ago when they closed the other road there. We get that, it seems like the thing we're often running, also is to go up and meet with the city, find out what they are going to require in the way of the road design, and that's a very difficult.
Finding the money will be the difficult part and setting that up. Any other supervisors have any comments on this topic?
Not at this time.
Well, I think Martin's question was resolved, I believe. Martin, did you see the letter that came from the, I think it's the chairman of the Crado HOA? You had asked for some commitment that what we're proposing, or what we're looking at, was acceptable to the entire HOA, and I think that guy sent a letter, but look pretty well summarized that.
Yeah, I still have questions, but for now, I'm okay.
Okay, I didn't know if you were looking for more.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Audience or board members? Okay, if not, I'll move on to the second topic, and this is something we discussed at the last meeting, too, and it was really looking at adding an additional stormwater conveyance under I-75, and we're looking at a number of solutions and efforts to enhance our stormwater system, and one of the main ones continues to point at the small box culverts under I-75. And staff had a very detailed meeting with the DOT planning and engineer, and the response from them is they would consider looking at it when they look at adding an additional lane to I-75, which will happen in about 10 years, is that plan horizon. So, there won't be anything coming from them, it'll have to be an initiative that we institute. What we were looking at here is you talking to the legislative delegation and their staff and trying to get them to include some planning and design money inserted in the DOT budget. Typically, if you can get that planning and design money in, then a few years later, it follows with the construction money to add another culvert under I-75.
So, their, the outcome of it was their concern is a monetary financial issue, not necessarily an engineering issue?
No, they don't have a problem with that side, but they identified...
Hey, Bob, 10 years, find out those people out, how fast they can build that arc.
Say that again?
Find out how fast your Pelican Preserve people can build that arc if it's going to be 10 years.
But we're putting...
We need politicians involved.
Yeah, well, that's what we're going to do, and we're putting together a new position paper, and we'll go around from a staff level to staff level, and visit the legislative delegation office, and then also when they have legislative delegation hearings, I believe it will be in February, in preparation for the March session start this year, and we'll just give it a good try and try to get some community support. I would caution that typically these things, the first year, you don't see any action, but the second or third, they might, and it's worth a try to get some funding.
Well, our deal is we've got to have the backup, planning, and layout to be able to explain to anybody why we're doing this, we're not just doing it for pets. And when it gets down to it's personal, with people having to avoid flooding, you get people's attention real quick, like on that, and including politicians, because they don't want to be the one that stops. So, we've got the background work to get that done, but Brian did the calculation, and I agree with it, that guys, it's simple, we got two 8x4s, we need two equivalent, more 8x4s, basically, to get through there, or that equivalent pipe size, and that costs X dollars, and it's got to be done.
Yeah, and that's the only way to get it, is get a regional effort going, and they get some citizen support underwriting, do some of the delegation members from some citizens.
And you met with the guy that they told us to call?
Yes. Brad Seachell?
I don't remember that. Probably was going to... Seachell?
Brad.
Anyway. So, that was his... These concerned about that.
Yeah, and sometime you get lucky, and they have some money sitting around the budget they don't know what to do with, and if you're there with an appropriation request that goes that way, but I would say realistically, it would be two to three years out, but if we start working on it now. And from Gateway's perspective, we haven't approached legislative delegation for any assistance. I remember Jim Brand went to talk to them about the sound wall on A-2, the design was already passed.
Yeah, I think we get our ducks in the line, and that is the next step to...
Yep, that's the only target that we have. And also ask Kenny to come up, because Austin and him were up at the two meetings ago talking about some irrigation initiatives, and we continue to move forward with others looking at enhancing efficiencies and measuring, and just making our water use more efficient. Kenny?
Good afternoon, Kenny Hall, Utility Manager. At our last meeting, we were going over, in anticipation of setting water, scheduling times throughout the district with our current system, and I just wanted to go over real fast, is that this sitting board, over the last five years, we have completely redone our pump, pump house, metering system, wells have all been rehired, we are starting to, an issue that's going to start popping up is maintenance. The first pump that we installed in 2015 that we, has come due, and each year following that, we are going to hit our pump hours for rebuilds, rehabs, what have you. They have a certain amount of pump hours, motor hours, and then they need to be pulled in and rehabbed. Tonight, we're going to be, as part of our capital budget that we planned for this year, was to have in stock two motors and pumps, and a replacement junky pump should be moved in, and we now have the staff, and we have the electrician to be able to pretty much do all of this in-house, and this is a tremendous savings. And we can, we are not at the mercy of contractors, or when they can get here, how fast we can get them here, and what reach we have to pay for that. We are in a position where if we lost the pump or motor, at our current rate, we couldn't, we would not meet demand, so we would have to almost emerge all contractors, and when you do that, your pricing just goes through the roof. We have made a lot of new hires, and one of, we are able to do 95% of this in-house now with our irrigation system, and with these motors, pumps, and everything that we've done to our system in the last five years, we are all set up to run full speed, full bore, ready to go. And the last thing we're going to need is a scheduling time to disperse this, to disperse our demand through the master meter, through the residential, through the HOA common areas, and through the commercial hookups that we have. So, we, as we go through with this, we've looked at everything that we've done, and this is, will be the last part of the process, we get this all sorted out, we should be good to go. We are set, we've got five thoroughbreds down there ready to run, we'll be able to meet demand. A lot of the good things that are happening for us is that this community back here is going to be coming to our plant. So, all that treated effluent is, it's brought through Lee County, they're not a part of our system, but their sewage goes through that plant, and we get that effluent for us, and we, and as that effluent comes, as our effluent comes into that plant, our wells go down, our usage goes down, our pump time goes down, our motor pumps goes down, our well times goes down. It's just positive after positive after positive. When that community is completely built out, it comes to us, so we get a huge bump in treated effluent for our irrigation system. And that's a, that's a big thing coming down the pipe for us with this, and then we have another big development right up here in front of us, the apartment complexes up there. That's all going to be coming to us, that will be added to our effluent. So, that will get us even closer to dropping out on the sandstone, and the lower all four and the chloride provisions that we have to meet for our permit, as we get that treated effluent, it's a positive all the way around for the district, for us. And also with our, our combining of our water range permits that we talked about at the, the last time we were up here, we had a meeting, was it Tuesday? Tuesday, no, I think it was Tuesday, and it looks really favorable. We're going to add, we're asking that the water table, the water table aquifers that are on our, our off course permit will be on our 688, our water lease permit, so we'll have a third source of water to add into our irrigation, which is another great benefit to us. And we also ask for a much larger allocation of water, and by all means, from what we're told, that it looks like everything is going to go through. We will get even a larger allocation of water for us, even better. So, we've set the table for everything to go through. We should have no issues with demand. We've updated our VFD system, we've created an inventory list for anything that could possibly go wrong back there, we have backups for it, everything. So, this will be the end game as far as the irrigation. And I just wanted to reiterate, this is a mission-critical component of our utility system. It has, it's systemic, it goes into everything. If we can't move the water, I mean, there's just issues on every side of it. So, I just want to just bring home how important it is that we get this watering schedule on track, and what we would like to do is to come back, I'd say, January time, December time, present it, and then open it up for the board, and let you all see exactly what we want to go for, and what you all would like us to do. We would like to have a 90-day trial, where we get, and like we were doing in the past, we were going up to the HOA board meetings and meeting with the HOA, and we did it when we did the master meter community last year, and we had great success with it. Most of the time, like we touched on with our residential watering schedule, it's not that they're not watering on the right days, it's the days that they're overwatering that we have to educate our residents on, and we would like to have, you know, get out there and start educating everybody on what we're doing, and why we're doing it, and how precious of a resource this is. And we went to the HOAs with this information, and we, it was very, we had really good reception, and it worked out. We have, still have some tweaking to do with it, but it does work, if we can get out there and educate the residents. A lot of them don't even mess with their irrigation, their landscape, and we educate them, and then it goes down the line. So, we are just in a positive, positive, positive position with our irrigation system. This water's spent a substantial amount of money, and it is all set up together. So, this is where we're really, and why I keep coming back with how important this is that we get this on the, done and, and moving. So, that was basically what I wanted to, and plus also on our South Florida Water Management Permit, we are required to have a conservation plan, even though we're exempt. We went through it with the last water infrastructure, South Florida Water Management, that we are exempt, but as a provision of our water resource permit, we still have to have a water conservation plan, and this will just tie that, tie that not be done with it. So, that's basically where I wanted to go with all this, and just wanted to touch on another thing with, I wanted to show you 10 years of MLRs from 2010 to 2020. The MOR is a monthly operation report, it is a document that I report to the Florida's Department of Health every month, and the reason I'm showing that, or breaking this up, is it has the population and the number of connections that we have, and as of the August MOR that I submitted, we're 12,717 residents reported to the MOR. With that amount of people coming in, if you go back 10 years, it was, you know, at 6,000. It is really, really rocketed through, and I'm getting, where I'm going with that is the effluent disposal. With, 10 years ago, the district's own irrigation system was, was well equipped and could handle all of our effluent disposals, if we got into trouble, if we got anything like that, the system could handle it. But now that we have 12,000 people on our system, it is not sufficient as an effluent disposal. It's a tool, we can use a part of it, but it is not enough if we get into a trouble to use as a effluent, especially when we have 4,467 connections through our system, it's just not enough. So, I just wanted to, we put in a request for the Department of Health to get the old 2010 MLRs, which hasn't come.
Kenny?
Yes, ma'am.
I just, I think Mrs. Flaherty has a question, she was, had her hand raised.
I was waiting for him to finish, that's okay.
What about the question?
I'm, the sewer we're going to get, this, right? Are we being paid for this?
No, this is on, they're, they're part of Lee County's system.
We don't get money from them?
No.
We're just not...
We're not selling them anything, they're giving us all their...
I know, well, we pay, as residents, we pay a sewer charge.
They do, they do, they just make you the county, they're not on our system.
But we're getting that.
We're getting all that effluent.
But, but we're still not getting any money.
No, we're selling it, we're selling it to treated effluent, so we're getting it for nothing, we get the benefit of the water. Yeah.
I'm concerned we're not, you know, we're, we have to treat it and everything, and I know you said it's a benefit, but I still think because we, we're taking that, and because residents have to pay a sewer, we should get something from it.
I think the confusion is, we, apparently, apparently it's what you're going to get, pretty much, not ours.
That's just water that doesn't even enough for us to start with our residents at a discount.
We're just a... Okay, so, the 12,467, I've been putting that to them for a certain time.
You don't like that? They was just changed in 2018, Health Department challenged us on that, and pushed us into it, get the classification.
They should get it, I mean, it's commercial equipment. I mean, they use water. They got acreage, I mean, they got a lot of acreage in Gateway. I don't, I don't think, if I just make the normal two people per house, and multiply times the number of VRDs we have without commercial, I'm at 12,000, I don't think it includes any allowed...
And, and, and 2020 consensus is done, and most of, that number is being challenged again. It's going to go off.
I think what we need to do is to clarify that, I don't mind you doing the publicity like this, but account for all the uses, parks, recreation, the whole nine things, the yards, all use water, which is an equivalent population. I can hear less than 12,467 people, I want to know how many equivalent people there are.
This can be the connection.
Yes, second thing is, is that you talk about the conservation, is dollars allowed for conserving?
Dollars meaning raising rates?
Which is already a little ago, where we have an increasing sliding scale, so our conservation method is when we get to tier three, we just have that number that make it outline.
Yeah, well, that, that...
And that's our conservation. Well, in regards to...
I was just going to say, the inclining rate structure is part of a conservation plan promoted by the districts, and we do have our rate consultant working on our next rate right now, and we're looking at, they can adjust in those tiers by our consumption, and we're also looking at possible ways we could charge if people are watering on non-watering days.
And, and that comes down to, we had a very robust discussion about this with the staff, and it comes down to what the building system, our billing system can handle, and it comes down to days.
Our billing system.
Our billing system. If you're, we could say, you know, we're going to charge them, you know, 20 billion, it doesn't matter any number, the billing system and the way we would do that, that's what it comes down to, that's what our whole conversation came down to, it came down to days.
But with these kinds of fines, we have a problem.
Yeah.
But we can do it through money and billing on off-billing periods, have that building separate hour of rate or...
And it would have to be...
For thousands.
Days, days watering, like a day each resident gets two days that they're watering, and the days that, that they're watering off of that, the billing system could, we could...
You can do it, it's your fault.
Exactly, we could even promote it, and want as much as you want.
Then the last thing that you did, and I totally agree with all the positives, you did not, though, mention the wind payment, which remains, that, well, we're going to get Timber Creek, we're going to get probably 350,000 to 450,000 gallon a day, what do you do with it in the summertime?
We would be able to, basically, just all the water we got to get rid of. We would be basically shut our bubble and just run all straight effluent.
If it works, if the math works.
Yeah, I did it 2017, prior to Irma, but we ran the entire month of July on treated effluent.
The point I'm just trying to make is, is that we've got times where we have extremely wet weather, and we got to get rid of water coming out of that wastewater treatment plant, whether we like it or not.
And another thing that I've done in the last three years is really helped is level control. I don't let that tank level get, in the summer months, above 12 feet, it stays right there, and that gives us...
Safety cushion.
Oh, yeah, we got, we got a real nice safety cushion in there, and that's a lesson we learned from, that's a lesson we took right on the chin.
And that's part of the enhancement of the instrumentation, because we aren't going out there looking at a gauge on the side of the tank, it's all on the data system, you can control and monitor it.
I didn't have a lot of faith on that, so I didn't do it.
Sure. It's Flaherty?
I know you want to put it on an even, okay? However, if you have everyone on even, and they're all watering, between the houses is going to be saturated because both sides, I mean, so that, that, the residents are going to have a problem with that.
And that, and that goes back to that 90-day to 120-day buffer period we can pull out there, and there's going to be variances, there's going to be communities, there's all kinds of things that we're seeing, but that's more a variance, or site-specific neighborhoods, we could look at something like that to make that work. It doesn't have to be, you know, black and white, there's going to be variances in there, it just throughout our community with the different, the different sites that we have. We can definitely address that.
Because I know that's going to be an issue.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that, that whole, it's a lot of effort with demand management, whether it's rates or working with the community, but if you can manage your demand, then you aren't spending money on infrastructure you don't need, so you really are saving money.
You're saving all the good place with that.
And it's all about resilience and reliability on that irrigation system, because personally, I'd rather explain to somebody why they don't have any drinking water than why they don't have any irrigation water in this community.
Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you, Kenny. Any other questions from any of the board members in the audience? No, irrigation is a boring topic. No, irrigation is a boring topic.
Okay, that'll, turn our workshop at three thirty and we'll go into the regular meeting.
Okay, I do not have any cards registered for speakers. Is there anyone online? I was expecting Jeff Collins to be online. He was, had a request to the board I'll bring up during my time. Mr. Collins, are you there? Is there anyone else from the audience or the public that would like to make a comment?
Hello, Chris?
Yes.
Joe Schofield, how are you? Paul?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna let you know, I'm, I'm viewing this, I'm the delegated P-PAC rep for today, so I'll just be watching quietly.
Thank you. We appreciate your participation.
Have a good day and a good meeting.
Thank you.
And I'll move into some informational items that we have. We try to keep our more lengthy staff reports for the first meeting of the month, but I did have the, a request from a Mr. Jeff Collins. And Mr. Collins lives over in Waterford Village and he wanted to see if board would consider helping out with a Gateway Christmas parade for this coming season. And he has several ideas, he's looking at everything from people pulling their boats, um, the floats, to passing out Candy Cane's Christmas songs. See, they typically start an event like that over at the community church across the street and then maybe end up at the soccer field. He's looking at December thirteenth, starting at the Gateway Charter School. And then going down to next level, South on Commerce and then head up Griffin to the soccer fields. And something like this is a, I think, a huge undertaking because you'd have to get the board and the staff lined up on it, the Sheriff's Department lined up on it, the county to get permission to be on the county roads for a parade, et cetera. But I just wanted to relay his request to the board. I appreciate the intent from a staff side. It's just a huge undertaking, especially with the potential Christmas party or holiday on the horizon. Any questions from the board about that? Comments? And also today of, of interest to everybody is the, the pre-construction meeting for the roundabout, Commerce Lakes Drive. And the total, total price will be two point eight seven two million dollars, including our seven hundred thirty-two thousand dollars of utility relocation. And a big thing I think you'd be interested in, even though the schedule is tentative, they have a anticipated start date of November tenth. And then looking at getting involved in the mobilization and actual clearing, January twenty-first, and getting the maintenance of traffic implemented twenty-first through March twenty-third. Right now, what they're looking at is keeping one single lane open on Gateway Boulevard and also on Commerce Lakes. However, that one lane opening will be a straight and right turn only. There will not be a left turn from any of those approaches. They also asked the contractor today what would happen to his schedule. If instead of doing the maintenance of traffic and leaving one lane open in all directions, if they shut the entire intersection down and detoured traffic around that intersection on Gateway Boulevard and Commerce Lakes, which would obviously have some huge impacts. But we'll, we'll stay abreast of this and let you know of any updates to the schedule. But it looks like they're waiting to get started until everybody's back in town. Ms. Flaherty?
Can I go back to the system?
Sure.
Could Mr. Collins come in and tell us how he plans to organize it and stuff like that? And, I mean.
Yeah, I thought he was gonna be online today because I think there's a lot more involved with this type of thing that.
That's just not enough information.
Yeah. But I like the intent. It's a, it's a nice community and some other folks do that in other HOAs.
And I just was wondering who he has, you know, who he has volunteering and what is, you know. I think a lot of it would come from the church because Jeff has organized for children's parade downtown. So we should probably be able to follow. I thought it would be nice for him to come in so we could even ask questions.
Okay, I'll ask him. And that's all I have for today. If there's any questions, we can.
I have an update on the security incident.
Okay.
On the agenda.
Okay.
Do you want me to do that later?
Hi, Laura Leary Ryan, Business Manager. I did, I have an update on the security incident that happened with the lockbox over the summer. I received an email yesterday from Iberia Bank letting us know that they, it's no longer an issue. They did other research, they identified a timeline. They gave us a list of anyone who was potentially affected and the list had a total of nine hundred and twenty-seven people's accounts. I had some different names, some nine hundred and twenty-seven accounts. There were several options that they laid out for ways to contact the people who are on that list. And I spoke with Zach at Tony's office, I know you're, you're aware as well. It's our, my recommendation as well as council's recommendation that we take the Iberia Bank, sends all the notification out to those people. They'll handle everything. They have an eight-hundred number that people can call. They're gonna give them free credit monitoring and ID theft protection and everything. So if we, they already have the list. All I need to do is just sign a piece of paper saying yes, please send these letters out. And that's, that's our recommendation is to just have them handle it and we just stay out of it. So I guess unless there's any, I know that council agrees that that's the best way. The three, either we can have them send the list out to everyone, we can have them send the list out to some of the people, which I don't think is right because how do you identify who should and who should not get it? Or we can send it out and they'll reimburse us for our expenses. So I thought the best way to do it was just to have them do it. They already have all the information. They'll just send it out, they'll, they'll fill the phone calls and everything. So we, we just did, since we didn't, nothing happened here ethically, like we, we decided the last time with the notice that ethically we're, we should do something legally, we're not required to do anything because we didn't have any kind of, nothing happened here. But I, I vote that we should just let Iberia send the letters out and, and get the credit monitoring and everything for the customers.
So, so part of the issue, you know, as, as far as the ethics side of it goes is, part of the discussion that we had is if we send a letter, they send a letter and they're statutorily obligated to do so, it's gonna be confusing.
Right.
And it's just more clear if it comes directly from Iberia, they're prepared to do it anyway and it takes the, that.
They're just removing us from that, right. They, they'll handle everything. They, they'll fill all the phone calls. They'll take care of the credit monitoring, they'll take care of the mailing. It's their issue, it's not our issue. But we're still taking care of our customers by saying yes, go ahead and sign this stuff out. Okay, I will go ahead and sign off on that then. And I, I have to get it back to them by Wednesday, so I'll sign off and send that back to Dana.
Sure, question totally nothing. Those the HR will come.
You won't see anything until December. It's in with Suzanne right now.
Okay, that's right. Thank you very much.
And now we don't have the engineering on the agenda update, so I think we'll wait till the next meeting. The comments, there is anything from the district attorney?
Yes, there's several things worth from Tony. One is that he is in the process of settling a call with Charles Mann on the FPL issue. Next is, he has drafted the letter to South Florida regarding Timber Creek and Chris has it for review.
Right.
Okay.
This is the letter regarding the burn?
Burn, the water flowing over and Tony also included that asks the district to do a requirement for seventy-two inch pump and a flow monitoring station set up on discharge from Timber Creek into Gateway.
Okay.
So.
Plained up to do it for some.
Well, it, you know, give it a try. We're looking at some measuring devices to have down there also from our side, just put something in. Physometer and recorder and a stat gauge.
Never seen anybody be successful in measuring sheet blow. I see people guessing sheet blow, but Jeff measured sheet blow.
Uh, he has reviewed post-orders for Stony Brook and he will send his redlined barkups tomorrow. And then with PPCA, Tony is reviewing and will report in November at the November meeting. So that's for the ERT? Does that sound familiar?
Yeah, it's, they're emergency volunteers to staff the guardhouse in a hurricane when secure toss is off-site.
Oh, this is, sorry.
No, it's actually, yeah, they have a volunteer group together and in a lot of cases, they're covered under the PPAC insurance. But the guardhouse is a district asset that we checked with our carrier and our workers cover some, not wages, but any accident or medical, that also goes across the board to their ponds group, those volunteers they use to inspect the ponds, supervise their contractors.
Yeah, we just did our H O A shows, we had a similar deal, that the coverage was for any committees and with the numbers. And we don't have any employees.
And then Tony wanted me to remind everyone that for the November meeting, you all need to have a quorum physically present here to go forward with the meeting.
Will do.
That's the fifth.
I'm planning on being there.
Okay, we've got three.
Then we, that's it, that's the quorum.
And then I, I believe I forgot to say that at the last meeting, so I'm just going to say it just in case is, Tony did say that he's going to do, and probably I will actually do, a Sunshine Mall presentation for you all once the new board is sworn in. So public records and Sunshine Mall is very exciting. It's a super fun presentation and everyone wants to hear it.
That, Chris, Charlie, she.
We'll have, we'll have snacks.
Maybe caffeine too.
Okay, anything else?
That's all from the district attorney.
Thank you. The chair, we're ready to move into the action items portion of the agenda. I think first up, we have Brian.
Good afternoon, Brian, Public Works Manager. Jenna, item this for, or these submersible for Basin Five. Wish I reached out to MRI. Enough of me with MRI, they're the ones that just fixed the damage to the box culvert over Gateway Greens. Very reactive. It was hit on Monday. I was off, I got here Tuesday and we had them by Wednesday visually inspecting the pipes with our submersibles. Came back the next day with the VACcon. Is the inspector who we have on the job sites has basically hit here, so they went down the VACcon. We found where the pipe was damaged. What it is, you're not familiar with, it's a six-by-eight box culvert, big concrete box culvert on tractor grill through the side of, a big four-inch hole inside of it. And in order to fix that, you actually have to put a diver into that box culvert. They fixed it temporarily from the inside to get the water from coming out. And we had a crew yesterday come back and dig down, fix it from the outside. They do very good work. I did reach out to Morris Riley, Bob asked me to, I did, never heard back. The problem is with the submersible, folks, we got about a month, then the pipes are start drying out, it's not gonna work. And it takes about four or five weeks to do Basin Five. You're not familiar with Basin Five? It's pretty much from Gateway Greens going south to Daniels, from the elementary going all the way to West Lakes. It's the biggest basin we have. And it hasn't been inspected according to what I found since two thousand fourteen by Morris Riley prior to Irma. It's big and I kinda wanna jump on before they start the roundabout because it's gonna be an area down there we gotta go through. So. And they will, once they're done with, we get a detailed report, all four hundred something pipes, four twenty to be exact, whether how much blockages we have, what's the issues. They've been told some of, we can't find the, the more damage preserved with the submersion, we will. If not with a diver, we'll find the end of one or another.
Are they gonna keep like we did before, excuse, the cut sheets, the tapes and the plan due aerial photos? Who's, who's gonna physically put, because this was a problem we had before because we didn't have a lot of what I would call good maps. Now I think we've got halfway decent maps. But who's going to physically tape and really put them deal in in structure A and go to structure B? Who's going to measure it? Who's going to define the size of it and then who's gonna put it on a map?
He will do all that for us.
That's.
And then I will get with Austin, our new intern at GIS. So we can have detailed reports exactly where we know what's at and then it's field.
And all of the mounds of debris and the defects, he's gonna station it off the upstream, downstream.
Yeah, he will tell you where the pipe that might be cracked or leaking or where a structure could be leaking. Then basically give a synopsis and say, here you go, you need to do this with this one, it's over twenty percent full, now you need to clean it. And by doing this, the beauty is not everything needs to be cleaned because we have clean cells. So we will find out what needs to be done, what not, and that doesn't need to be done.
Then the last thing is, is that just to be consistent, are we gonna use the same manhole-to-manhole designation system Morris Riley used so that we can compare apples to apples?
What I did is actually gave him a Morris Riley report with all the exact layouts of everything. I gave him everything we had, so it's apples to apples, so I know exactly what was done. Because we did find some Morris Riley stuff that L had through, back in two thousand thirteen.
I've got what I believe to be the last set of aerials, and I'm sure we have a duplicate somewhere here, that showed all of the lines that were done and what their manhole designation was. And then I have three reminders of all the cut sheets. We've done a lot of it, but like you said, Basin Five was kind of a step job.
Yes, and luckily when Morris Riley reports stuff, structure, structure, shu, head wall to manhole, we have all that, which was good because I gave it all to them, an additional, everything we could find for Basin Five. Five I plan on doing this year since it is the biggest. Then we plan on doing four and three together hopefully next year because that is, keeps continuing further north. The goal is to start farther south, work the way north always did the newest.
You know. So you're gonna get your good go from what?
We're starting from the south to go to north since it's the oldest in the south.
So you're gonna go with small pipes and then big pipes?
We're gonna hit them all.
Most big pipes are further to the.
Yes, we're gonna hit them all. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, thank you.
I know you had a question.
Yes, you did look for other proposals.
I have. I reached out to Morris Riley over a week and a half ago.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure there was more than one chance.
If I may, companies that do this.
If I may, Chris. Chris, can I contribute?
One moment, we'll let Ms. Flaherty finish and I will put you on.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was my concern because I was to see more than one proposal. But if you did, if you did try, I appreciate that, so that, you know, if you, they didn't respond.
And if I wait for another board meeting?
Right.
Now you're two more weeks behind, we want to get this done this year. Because you're gonna run into graphics and a smarsol that I won't work.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gepper, you had a comment?
Oh yeah, I got a couple. I've been in communication with Morris Riley. They have expressed an interest, a strong interest in bidding on it. The problem that I think that Brian ran into is he was sending stuff to an email that had been hacked and abandoned. And we got all that resolved probably Tuesday of this week. I don't know what the all-fired urgency is. I hear that the water's gonna go down, but I sure haven't seen it, certainly not in the next three or four days. But I think the price advantages that Morris Riley offers shouldn't be ignored. It's a tremendous savings. So if we wanna save money, what's a day or two? If we're just hell-bent on giving it to somebody else, well, I guess I'm okay with that. It's your money.
Brian, I had one question. Is, is this Extreme Divers?
No, not MRI. MRI is a local company on North Fort Myers. They're very big, they can handle this. They're actually the ones that fits Callaway Greens for us as well. And he's got the stuff and now to fix that forty-two inch pipe over there. We've used them before, they're very good. What I like about them is they are local, so I'm not getting hit with a big fee from trailing from Sarasota or out of town, which will happen with Morris Riley because they are not local, they're out of town. And if I need something, they're here like now. I mean, what a great rapport with what we had happen in Gateway Greens. They were here pretty much the next day. I can't ask people any better than that.
Morris Riley responds very quickly. We've used them for five years. They were so inexpensive that even Lennar used them. And we've never had a problem with them being here.
That may not be a, that may not actually, the fact that Lennar.
Well, they're in the glowing recommendation, but historically they go with the lowest bidders.
Up to you folks.
Can I just say one thing on the issue that it may be one or two extra days? Yes, but I think what Brian's saying is that it has to come back before the board at another meeting, so it would actually be an additional period.
I couldn't hear that.
What I'm saying is it's, I understand that it maybe take one or two days for them to get the proposal, but then it would have to come back before the board for, you know, for a vote.
Well, why don't you wait for the board to have the board take the lowest one?
Well, they didn't respond to Brian, so that's where.
He didn't the first time and actually.
That is not true Kathleen, that is not true that they didn't respond, I don't want to hear that.
Respond if you listen, sir. He did reply back to me after I got the correct email. The first one you gave me must have been hacked and I did not know that, so.
I know, I didn't know it either.
I wanted to reach out to him probably three or four months ago. How did I know the email was hacked? I wouldn't have. So I just.
Well, I didn't know it either, Brian, till I found out and sent you that, that was.
Well, thank you.
But that doesn't mean he shouldn't save the district money.
And I am doing my darndest to do that.
And you can't wait in here to and take the lower bid?
I have one bid, I do not have anything from Morris Riley, is what I'm trying to say.
And what I'm trying to say is wait till his bid and take the lower, I don't care which is lower, whichever one, that's what you should take.
Let's cross the bridge right there, Margaret, let's move on.
I think that Brian wants to have a up or down on this, he needs some direction on this. We either approve this and let him start doing the work or ask him to change direction. So I will make a motion to approve this MRI inspection proposal, see how it goes.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second discussion, questions?
Is this? Is there something wrong with waiting for a second bid and choosing the lower?
Mr. Gepper, you're out of order.
Typically, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right, it's just board discussion at this moment.
Hey Brian, have you heard any indication from?
Morris Riley.
Morris Riley?
Yeah, Morris Riley.
He basically replied back, say I will look into it, but like I said, the issue I have is if it takes another week to 10 days, this will not happen. Because it takes four to five weeks to do inspection of this many pipes. My fear is that.
Let's do this. The email was no fault of our own. I think if they're interested in bidding, give them, you know, a certain amount of days, what you think is within reason without what, which does not put us at risk. And if they get back to us within, you know, let's say Wednesday of next week, fine, if not, then we move forward.
Do we have a bid schedule?
All the pipe segments.
I'm assuming they're all going to fill out a bid schedule, is that all there?
It's not, I just want the information that he already has and say just give me a bid, what you want to figure out.
But I mean, is it a, is it a unit price bid I'm taking?
Yeah, it's pretty simple. Actually, what MRI gave me basically per pipe, not per foot, he gave me a deal by doing it per pipe.
Per diameter pipe.
Basically just the length of the pipe. So it's like, if you've got a 200 foot pipe compared to 100 foot pipe, it's pretty much the same price. He gave me a deal because how many pipes? He goes, I can't charge you per foot, which he could have, but he said it's easier if I just do it a big. If you have 420 pipes, I'm going to give you this amount of money to do all the pipes.
Well, following up on what Doug is saying, how easy is that to confirm, conform to a schedule that would have Morris Riley being able to do either five days or they can't do five days?
He basically had it since Monday, when he replied back to me, says it's been three. I mean, I can wait another week.
So Morris Riley, Morris Riley has the actual bid documents to be able to give you.
He has everything, he has everything I gave MRI.
And he hasn't returned them.
Just said he would look into it.
He's going to bid, Brian. He's going to bid, he's not looking into it. You're going to have a bid.
I wish you would call me, it'd be nice, wouldn't sound the one.
Did he say Bob, when he was going to have it?
I just talked to him and they'll definitely, somebody threw out Wednesday of next week. I think they'll probably have it tomorrow or Monday, but definitely by Wednesday.
I think that would be acceptable.
You dealing with who, Bob?
Boris, Matt Morris. And Bill Riley, both.
Okay.
And they, they have the ability to do the underwater inspection?
They have done everything in Pelican since day one and they did it for Lennar in Pelican. And had the same type of reports and the same videos. Everything that was described in that thing is a known quantity with this company. And when we investigated, they were heck of a lot cheaper than anybody else.
I understand what you're saying, Bob, I do. It's the delay, I think, is the concern. So with no further discussion, if no one else has any discussion, board member has any discussion or comment that they'd like to make, I'm going to ask Chris to call the vote.
Any more discussion, hearing none, we'll move forward with the vote. To move forward with MRI, Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Supervisor Guy?
No.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Feinberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Unbelievable.
Motion path is three to two. Okay. And I'll move into our next three items, or Kenny, for utility expenditures for pumps, sewer pumps and lift station panels.
Good afternoon, Kenny Hall, Utility Manager. The first question, question is approved expenditure of $45,000. High service pump irrigation. And due to this and the earlier discussion on irrigation, we will be buying backup pumps and builders for our 150 horsepower and 75 horsepower pumps for stock. And for these pumps each year are going to have to be, are going to have to come offline and be rehab. They're reaching their maintenance hours. So we are going to have stock pumps that we can take one out, put a new one in and just keep rotating them around.
Kenny, I have a question.
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve purchase of the pump, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Tinkle, motion by Supervisor Feinberg, questions and discussion? Supervisor Flaherty?
Okay, you only have one company here, is that the only company that does it? Or is that the company we've been working with?
Yes, that is the company we've been working with of the wide of, wide of pumps. In this situation, as with most in the utility system, you want to keep as many uniform, keep as uniform as possible. We don't want to have four different kinds of pumps and four different kinds of motors. So once we decided, I think we looked at 15, we just stopped with that same. We've expanded, we look on the horsepower, but the actual pump and motor was the same.
Okay, well, thank you very much, ma'am.
Yes.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. Kenny, do I understand that we have all new service pumps in the district? And yet you want to buy three additional ones? Plus the other detailed things for $45,000. Now, I'm all in favor of having a spare. And I probably could be talked into buying two spares, but three, no. If you're going to, if it's set on three, you're going to get a no vote out of me.
Yes, sir. We have two different types of pumps and the reason for the third one is the 75 horsepower jockey pump. We have, we now have five 150 horsepower pumps, which require different pumps and motors obviously because they're different sizes. And then we have a 75 horsepower jockey pump that runs, you know, the system during the day. So we would need a pump and a motor as a replacement for the jockey pump. And then we would need the redundancy for the 150 horsepower pumps, which we would, as we would take them off or something catastrophic or anything that you can think of that would take that motor or that pump offline, we would have the backup.
Are you basically saying two standbys for five and one standby for one?
Yes.
You want to, you want to, you want to run that by me one more time?
Billy's got five main pumps and he's asking for two standbys and he's got one jockey pump, there would be one standby. So while you do.
It's two, one kind and one of another?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, that helped, very, very helpful.
And if I may make the comment too, Kenny, when we order one of those pumps, how long does it take to get in?
It can take, depending on when you do it, when the actual order, it can take any course from six to 16 weeks. It depends on the runtime and then the delivery time on top of that, when we can actually get in.
Yeah, and those pumps, unfortunately, none of the suppliers, they basically build them when you order them. So if we did have one or two of our pumps go down, our system could not meet peak demand. And that's one of the reasons, it's all resilience and reliability. And again, if we can also shift those pumps and motors out for routine maintenance or if one reaches its useful life, you know, we have it here versus having to wait six to 16 weeks.
If the agenda item were written up more clearly, it would have saved me a lot of headache.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Call the vote?
Yep.
Supervisor Flaherty? Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Feinberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes.
Any motions approved for the expenditure for the irrigation system high service pumps?
Next, I do, approved expenditure of $30,000 for these, the district's stop submersible sewer pumps. These approved budgeted funds for the 21 capital improvement plan will augment our current stop pumps into the inventory. There again with the, the same with the 150 and the 75 horsepower motors and pumps. We bid this out three years ago and had five different pump manufacturers come in and bid and Sulzer was the winning bid. In the past, we, at one point, we had five different types of models of motors in our sewer system, which just complicates everything to the tenth. We have five different pumps for five different manufacturers for five different people that can bid. And each pump requires one vendor to prepare them. So what we have done is streamlined everything again with the pumps to get one pump with one manufacturer with one, one stop shop. And he is local, he comes out of Bradenton, high for service, is our Sulzer pump manufacturer representative. And it's just a one stop, one stop shop with these pumps that fit our system.
I'll let you go.
We're going to, this, this order will be one, one more 20 horsepower stop pump and five, five horsepower stop pumps. Two will be right, put right into service.
120 and five, five?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second it for me, one question.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Tinkle and a second by Mrs. Flaherty, any questions?
Okay, it says here that you are, which you have three pumps for equal horsepower, right?
Yes, over the long term. That's what we want to, that's what we're ordering shooting for. The five horsepowers with this order will give us that. Two are going right into service. We'll be pulling two pumps out of that have been in service for 12 years and then we will add three up for stop.
Okay, thank you very much.
What are we putting on these standbys?
Where?
Is it garage?
Yes, sir. Darren, you have Christmas present.
You have a rack or something?
Yes, sir.
Please, on.
Yes.
Okay, there are no more questions, we'll call the vote for approval of the pump's purchase. Mrs. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Guy?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Ms. Feinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
Okay. Approval? Five to zero, Kenny, next item, lift station panels.
Approved expenditure of $63,998 for the district's new lift station, lift station panel. These approved budgeted funds for the 21 capital improvement plan will phase in the new lift station panels as a part of the 2020 CID, the final four lift station panels that were in our system were replaced with our new panels. These new panels come with two VFD drives, streamlined components matched to the district's inventory, SCADA and GIS system. And these new panels with the VFD drives will give us a very significant electrical consumption reduction over years with the VFD drives. They, we've installed four new panels into our system and we've had three in the system for over 90 days. And we are already starting to shape the electric bill long-term wise with these VFD drives and the lift station panels. And this again is one, the same manufacturer, Hydro Service, where we get our submersible sewer pumps. We built these panels to match our inventory, our needs for our stations and look for us.
Kenny, how many majors and how many minors?
Major.
How many of these lift stations are major stations, aren't there minor stations? These panels you're replacing?
Sir, we're going to replace them all, I understand, we're phasing them out.
But you're asking right now for the all of them, we're dumping majors.
We're doing Girl Scout, we're doing Gateway Green, this upgrade will have four satellite stations with one major master station.
So that one major and four minor stations.
We're going to do all Gateway Greens, that whole entire section. And that we'll be able to, and the reason we're doing that is we're going to track, attract the, the electrical consumption of Gateway Greens.
That's what I wanted to know where they were.
And Stony Brook will be, if we get approved, Stony Brook will fall in 2022.
Are you considering Girl Scout the major?
Yes, sir, all Baby Greens was in Girl Scout.
Yeah, if the other four that are the stations within.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. There are no further questions, call the vote. Mrs. Flaherty?
Yes.
Mr. Guy?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mrs. Feinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
And I wanted to echo what Kenny said, these VFD drives have fewer moving parts, enhanced reliability, enhanced energy consumption. Big reduction in that and also interfaces with our SCADA and GIS system. So just moving forward with the instrumentation. It's either more people or more communication, we're going with.
And we can make, with these new panels, we're now starting to make operational decisions from our homes, from our phones and from our computer systems that allows us to see levels, what's actually going on with these stations, that these new panels allow us to do, that gives us that tool. So we're already making operational decisions over time. No, we don't need to go in, no, we do, yes, we do, we can tell the level now. You know, if it happens at four o'clock in the morning, we can wait and come in, you know, and come in at eight o'clock in the morning. It saves us, you know, just, it's a positive across the board on these new panels.
Thank you.
We found at Gateway Greens, as you're aware, that horse main is the main one coming up, Gateway Greens from the west to the east dumps into what we thought the manhole at Monta, Run Intercession, when in fact it bypasses the manhole and dumps into the main.
And then back flows.
I know it, have we found this anyplace else?
Not anywhere, not anywhere.
And I know that it's a catastrophic mess to fix that, but we better be putting that on the agenda for future, that, that is not smart at all.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Got nothing to talk and preserve, if anyone wants to know. Steve Stricker is doing the work, still too wet being Monday.
Got nothing to talk and preserve, if anyone wants to know. Steve Striper's doing a work. Still too wet on Monday.
Kenny, that, he was giving an update. Mr. Geffer, you may be interested in that Pelican, but that repair on that sewer line, it was damaged by hot wire. Their de-watering still hasn't progressed enough, so that repair will actually start on Monday. So those pumps will be continuing to run tomorrow and over the weekend to de-water that hole.
Yeah, they're actually bringing in, the two pumps they have will not handle the task. They're bringing in a third pump, and they're hopeful that that will do it.
So what are they doing with the sewage?
Grabby Fins City's got a pump.
They're pumping down the manhole, yeah.
Yeah, the water that's coming out is all clear. And it is into the, into the street sewers.
But this brush will work, right?
Yes. What scares me is when they were underneath that bridge over there. And we got two box culverts who will come into play as well.
Box culverts where?
On the flow.
That's not a bridge.
No, that's a stream. Down when they get toward ours, they got two box culverts to go over top.
Who's doing the work?
Top line, I mean, so.
Chris, am I being heard?
Yeah. Sorry, I'm going over to Bob. We're just asking, Brian, who is the subs doing the work for Hotwire?
Strickland. Or Strickly. Steve Stricker? Stricker, Stricker, he's the guy doing it.
Fixing the sewer. Who's doing the boards? That's-
I don't know what's up.
Hotwire is no longer going to be doing the actual repair. They have been told by the city of Fort Myers that they have to get a professional company to do it.
Flash strippers. He just wanted to know who's doing the boards for Hotwire.
Yeah. And this was a deep sewer, I take it?
Oh, it was down about 12, 10.
Eight, 10.
They got to go down about 13.
Long as your road's caving in, so. He's been de-watering with two big Constance, and I didn't bring a foot one in. That's why I said be next to it for you. I bet you're building fences out. We had tremendous fences out everywhere, but.
Okay. Well, the last item we have on the action agenda has to do with the annual holiday party, and we had some discussion about this at the last meeting. And looked at scaling it back to some extent, especially for things like having a bounce house there, high contact, also sanitizing stations, signage for wearing masks. We cut it, we cut it back down to some extent. You know, last year was about 17,500. For Karen Scott, we're down to 15,000. We still have 5,700 in the budget to do the fireworks at the end. Lee County Sheriff, trash bags, a little money for staff overtime. Total cost, $21,951. Our budget's $17,500. We plan to raise the additional money through our donations, which last year we had about $6,500, so we don't think that'll be a problem. I wanted to bring this to the board because we were planning on moving forward with it on December 4th. However, between now and then, there is cancellation or concern or impacts from COVID. We will still be on the hook for about $10,300 in cancellation fees between Karen Scott events and also creative pyrotechnics. They both require a 50% deposit.
It seems to me that there's not a lot of risk with the creative pyrotechnics, but I could see the risk with the Karen Scott, simply because that's totally COVID related.
Now, it's, well, both of them, and they just booked that time. They asked for the 50% deposit, and then if you cancel, after they have it, they keep the 50%. And also with Karen, a lot of it on her side, is she's booking performers and Santa and stages and putting things together, so that's all reserved and rental company equipment and that. But it is a solid event, and I know people would like to have a nice holiday event. I just wanted the board to be aware of, you know, that fee we'll have to pay if we end up canceling the event.
I don't like the rock climbing, and I don't like the bucking with the entertainments.
Right.
Okay, I don't think we need that. I think more of a DJ with Christmas music, that people can, that would be better, and that Christmas tree lighting. And, because I don't want people rolling around making balloons, animals, and without, I don't want any face painting. I mean, I think it's, I think those are too much content. That's my personal opinion.
I'm going to jump in here now. I read through this, and staff's recommendation is just to cancel it altogether this year and perhaps have something in the spring, maybe around Easter time, when we have a better handle on what we're dealing with, with COVID. And I think under the circumstances this year, I know it's an event that people enjoy. I'm in favor of canceling it this year and revisiting this idea in the spring. That's my opinion.
Any other board comments? Mr. Guy?
Yes, I have a comment or two. First of all, I think that the annual holiday party is a big success in the past. And it's one of the few ways that residents get to understand that there is somebody working in that little building across from the soccer field. I know that every agenda item comes through you with your approval. I'm wondering why you bothered putting that business down at the bottom about recent spikes in virus, which I have read nothing about as far as Lee County and Florida, if it's heard. If you want to talk about New York or Connecticut or Texas, that might be so. But I read the paper every day, and I must have missed it. I too do not want to sacrifice the health of any of our residents, especially our young residents. But this is like a lot of other things. It's a balancing act, and at the moment, I'm inclined to go ahead. Thank you.
Mr. Tinkle, any comments?
Damn if you do, damn if you don't.
Mr. Banks, any comments?
No, I mean, I'm on the fence here. I could go either way. So I would, I mean, it push came to shove, I would take staff recommendation.
Okay, well, I guess we'll call for a motion approval or non-approval.
I'll make the motion to delay it.
Okay, we have a motion to delay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion delay, a second. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, on that item, we have a motion to delay. We'll call the vote. Mrs. Flaherty?
No.
Mr. Guy?
No.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Ms. Feinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yes.
Okay, three to two. Vote is to delay and look at scheduling an event. No, but I can put one up.
That brings us to supervisor comments. Mr. Tinkle, we'll start with you tonight.
Brought me by surprise. No comments.
Mr. Guy?
I have none.
Mrs. Flaherty?
I have none.
Wow.
Margaret, can I go back?
No. We're past.
I asked, can we go back?
Okay, go ahead.
The project over at Gateway Greens with the installation of the conduits for the Comcast fiber. I want to thank the staff. It's unbelievable. I was not involved in what happened to Stony Brook. I've heard the rumors of all the war stories. But the exposure of having, one, the inspectors over there, and then staff has been just unbelievable in, if something happens, are there on a dime. And it's really made that, I mean, we've hit stuff. When you go underground, you're going to hit stuff. But the staff is really doing one heck of a job with a complicated situation when you're pushing pipes underground. If the water sewer irrigation and everything else didn't get you, those oak trees will. But I thought staff has done a really, really, really good job. The same thing on the getting the line and the abals in for the north area gateway, where at least now, we have 350, 400 people that their water can be isolated. Often, we don't have a mass shut-off. So staff did one heck of a job and continues to do a good job on that tough situation with that fiber installation.
Mr. Banks?
Nothing for me, thank you.
And I have nothing this evening, so I will see everybody in two weeks. Have a good evening. I will call this meeting adjourned at 4:21. Thank you for the new record, everyone.